... Hey, how are you guys? Good to see you.
Welcome to the Office 7 City of Port Angeles Council Meeting. And I have all the council members up here, please. On the board.
I'll have him on.
Um, welcome. Let's do both conferences. Mayor Brooke President. Deputy Mayor Dexter. Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Ed.
Here.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Varan.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Harmon.
Here.
Acting Mayor Drew West.
President.
Attorney Lord.
Here.
Um, so Deputy Mayor Dexter is absent. We need to go ahead and excuse him. Do you have a motion to excuse?
I still move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, let's go ahead and then introduce the pleiadians.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've got a couple of proclamations today, folks, and we're going to start with the Hadori group. So we'd like to have the Hadori group come up here.
Hadori? Do moya.
Do moya.
Do. Do bo kodo ri. Do moya.
Up here. Come join me.
There's a lot of room that they can use. I know you have a word to it.
Wonderful. Thank you. So we've got a little proclamation here for you guys.
Shangye!
Ah!
Okay, let's do it.
Thank you. So I'm going to read the proclamation here for the Hadori Little Tiger Week from August 1st through August 8th. So whereas Taekwondo is the world's most popular martial arts in an Olympic event, and whereas Taekwondo teaches one to live in the present and in harmony with the forces in life, and whereas children who practice Taekwondo work to develop a high degree of self-respect, competence, discipline, coordination, and leadership abilities, and whereas the Hadori team is recognized as an elite member that represents this art to the world, and whereas this famous team has honored Port Angeles with a visit and a demonstration, choosing to make our city the first stop of their American tour. And if you were there, these guys were amazing. Truly amazing. And whereas the team will visit the Olympic National Park, tour Fair City, its famous underground, and inspire our citizens with amazing feats of athletic skill in the martial arts. And whereas the team demonstrated their skills at Peninsula College on August 4th for the benefit of the college Taekwondo program. And whereas the city appreciates the efforts made by Grand Master Nichols of White Crane Martial Arts of Port Angeles, former National Taekwondo Instructor of the Year and current Washington State President for the United States Natural Taekwondo Federation for his help to share the talents of the Hadori Little Tiger with the city of Port Angeles. Now therefore I, Sissy Brook, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim the week of August 1st through August 8th, 2018, as Hadori Taekwondo Week in the city of Port Angeles. And I further encourage all citizens to recognize, celebrate, and support the efforts of the Hadori Taekwondo Team and the White Crane Martial Arts.
Captain of the Korean Hadori Team, Grand Master Lim Go Koon.
So I turn this proclamation over to you. So thank you all and welcome.
Taekwondo people don't need microphones. We practice yelling every day. For starters, I'm not going to read them all. We're going to keep it a little simple. But this is for the City Hall of Port Angeles for all the support you've given us over the years, especially some friends of mine. Sherri, Nathan, you know, you guys have been a lot of good for us over the years. So this is for the City Hall of Port Angeles from the Jeetapuan, which is the world's most successful full-contact fighting school. The Yankees won 75 percent... No, 25% of the World Series. Jeetapuan has 70% of the world titles. Over a 75-year period. I'll give this to my friend because she's right here and she was very good to us last time. This time...
Oh my goodness.
Oh, yes. For all of her support, for all we're proud to certify, Mayor Sissy Brook is an honorable first-degree black belt in the art of White Crane and it's signed by three ninth-degree black belts. Master Roar from Thailand, myself, and Master Lim from Korea. And there are about 100 ninth-ants in the world. So three of them sign this. And I think you should present this to Angelina Sprague of Port Angeles, Washington, one of the youngest fourth-degree black belts in the country. Does the council have a minute or two to see them break some things?
Hadori! Changi! Kopa!
Okay, one day, be low, throw. Okay. Be low, throw. Okay. Shangye ni, da wo. Shangye ni, da wo. Oh, go. Young man, go. Young man, go. Who is it? Oh, he is going to go. Young man, go.
We didn't want wheelboards hitting you in the head. So we're using mockboards because of the type of orders here.
Go to the back. Go to the back. Okay, fly, fly.
It's okay.
Don't look at me.
Ha! Okay. Alright.
Now you all need to come to White Crane and learn to block those.
Back to you. You go.
I'm going to start.
Stop. Young man, go. Go, 1, 2, 3, 4. No, 3. I am trying to... No, 3.
Ha!
Start.
I can do that, I just don't want to.
No, 3. Go to the back. Boom, set. Go to the boom, set. Ready? More, more. More, more. Start!
This is what first-degree black belts do in Taekwondo competition. It's the only Olympic sport hitting martial art. These are 10-year-olds. Korea is named after the ancient dynasty from which we get the modern name Korea. And I won't lie, I could never pick that up.
3, 4.
Oh! We have time for one more thing? One more thing?
I'm 3, 4. Young man, go. Need you, 3, 4. One, two, three, four. Then 4. 3, 4. 3, 4. Go, 3, 4. Why do you... Go, 3, 4.
Ha! That was wonderful.
Will all the White Crane students in Hadori rise?
And this... And they will be coming again next year? Or, no, in two more years?
Next year it'll be Illinois, the year after Florida. We get them about every five years and believe me, that's all we need.
So in five years when they come back, everybody should take a look at it. They did an amazing, amazing presentation at the Peninsula College. So thank you all and welcome. So our next presentation... So we've got another proclamation. Today is a busy day for proclamations. We have three total. Music on the Straight. Who will be here to receive this proclamation? Oh, wonderful. Welcome, welcome. Okay, I'm going to read you guys the proclamation in recognition of Music on the Straight affiliated with the Port Angeles Symphony. Whereas the city of Port Angeles demonstrates through policies and actions encouragement and support for individuals and organizations to contribute to the various economic role being and other aspects related to quality of life. And whereas internationally recognized musicians and former North Olympic Peninsula residents, James Garlick and Richard O'Neill are giving their time and other resources as co-directors to launch the first Music on the Straight festival in appreciation of family members, teachers, and other individuals and community resources that nurture them. And whereas festival directors have established supportive relationships with leaders of the Port Angeles Symphony, Peninsula College, and other organizations, individuals, and businesses to obtain logistical and financial support to bring other world-class musicians to local venues for the premier festival and assuring a solid foundation for future annual festivals. And whereas festival organizers and other supporters already are attracting so many donors and ticket buyers from this area and beyond that venue appears likely to fill for all concerts and provide rationale for expanded festivals in the future years. And whereas musicians are working with area music education leaders to provide opportunities for visiting professionals to share their expertise with area students through programs during the concert week that they plan to increase in future years. And whereas concerts on Thursday, August 30th, Friday, August 31st, and Saturday, September 1st will feature some of the world's finest musicians and provide an opportunity for local musicians to perform with them with a finale with "Play What You Can" admission. Now therefore I, Sissy Brook, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby declare the week of August 26th through September 2nd as Music on the Straight Week in recognition of the exemplary initiative, persistent follow-through, and collaboration planners and supporters have demonstrated. We appreciate your efforts to bring the joy of music to our community. Thank you so much. Here's the proclamation. And I'm going to let you introduce yourselves and please let everybody know more.
This is Mary Ann Unger, President of the Board of the Port Angeles Symphony. I'm Chuck Whitney. I've been a board member for 15 years and currently Treasurer. The Port Angeles Symphony Orchestra has operated continuously as a volunteer community orchestra since 1932. Port Angeles has been said to be the smallest city in the United States with a full symphony orchestra. Last winter, two world-class musicians, James Garlick and Richard O'Neill, who played in Port Angeles Symphony in their youth, approached the symphony board about starting a summer chamber music festival. After careful consideration, we knew the two of them had tremendous drawing power and dedication to develop the series. The symphony is sponsoring the events with three concerts this year. Music on the Straight, August 30th, 31st, and September 1st. James Garlick began violin studies at five years of age with much of his violin training by local resident Jody Almond. He has a master's degree in violin performance from Juilliard Conservatory and has toured the world as a musician. And just yesterday, I got an email from James in London after playing in the world-famous London Proms. Richard O'Neill is a Korean orphan, raised and swimm, and trained in viola playing in Port Angeles by Phil Morgan Ellis, who is currently a player in the symphony. Richard is an Emmy Award winner, a two-time Grammy nominee, and an Avery Fisher Career Grant recipient. He was the first viola player to receive the Artist Diploma from Juilliard Conservatory and he was honored with a proclamation from the New York City Council for his achievement and contributions to the arts. So you're in good company. He has contributed his talents throughout the world. Port Angeles Symphony is excited to sponsor Music on the Straight, a chamber music presentation of extremely high quality that this city can be proud of.
This is so exciting. Thank you so much for doing this because this is really high-level music and it is wonderful that it's coming to our town.
Thank you so much.
That is really, really exciting. And I love that the following group that's coming up here might be able to do something about Timpinger getting more onto this. So let's get the Peninsula Area Public Access folks up here. Come on up. Alright. Yes, come on up. Now you get them. So here we go. Proclamation in recognition of the Peninsula Area Public Access. Whereas Peninsula Area Public Access Papa was created by a group of Callum area residents as a federally recognized 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in April of 2016 and broadcasting a 24-hour lineup of local programming promoting this area to the wider public since June 10th, 2016. And whereas broadcast journalism is currently the most popular career course offered at Port Angeles High School, and Papa TV provides a broadcast platform for these fighting producers. And whereas Peninsula Area Public Access works with the Port Angeles School District and Peninsula College to enhance educational opportunities in media on the Olympic Peninsula, providing the Spring Board leading to local students' nomination for multiple student NA awards by the National Academy of Television, Arts, and Science. And whereas Papa TV and Media Center is a community treasure owed by the community and open to all segments of the community desiring to create and promote their own programming. And whereas Papa TV productions include award-winning documentaries for discovering the new Dungeness Lighthouse, the Olympic Discovery Trail, Underground Port Angeles, and other historic and recreational destinations enticing history-minded travelers to come explore local attractions. And whereas Papa TV volunteers are constantly restoring the old fire hall, Lynch Bend, to Port Angeles Historic District for use in its local studio and media training center. Now therefore I, Sissy Brook, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim August 7th as Papa Appreciation Day in our city. And we encourage all the citizens to learn about and enjoy the services provided by the Peninsula Area Public Access Television available on Channel 21, on WAVE Cable, and around the world at www.papaonline.tv. Congratulations for all the amazing work you guys have done and I'm going to pass the mic on and I want you guys to all introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Patrick Angus. I'm President of the Board of Peninsula Area Public Access. And as Sissy said, we've been broadcasting now for over two years single day, 24 hours a day. And it's been challenging but extraordinarily uplifting as well to reach out and engage different members of the community and really bring all the activity and everything, you know, giving voice to a lot of local events and everything. And also, I could not be more proud of... Also, I'm a teacher at Port Angeles High School and the CTE program, Video Production, has been nominated for multiple awards. One of my students who's been nominated is up here for Student Emmy Awards. So just that opportunity that's created for the youth is just super exciting. And this summer's been really a huge summer for us. We've launched the Movies at the Park, which is tremendously successful. We are hoping forward to continuing that. And then also with the renovations to the Old Potter Hall, our studio. We can't wait to reopen it. I invite everybody in and show you what we've done to improve and upgrade everything. And yeah, the future is really exciting. But out of all of those kind of accomplishments and achievements, the thing I am most excited about is developing into a sustainable organization. And one of the key factors of that was bringing on an executive director, somebody who's had a tremendous amount of experience in the industry. And I'm going to pass it over to John Zuber to talk a little bit more about maybe the future.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you for having us here today. My name's John Zuber. I am the new Executive Director, which is very exciting for me to be coming into an organization that has a lot of potential for a lot of growth but already has a great foundation with the students and producers that we're already working with. We're really looking to create opportunities for students who are looking to look at the media as a career. And we've got volunteers already working at the Left East Baseball Games and producing all of their games. And we've got a lot more opportunity between the sports and different activities here in the city for our students to be working on projects with that as well. So really looking to showcase everything that Port Angeles has to offer as well as provide opportunity for students looking for careers and for things to do over the summer. That is exciting. So I'm really excited to be here and happy to be a part of the team and ready for all the growth that we're about to experience over the next years.
I'm Arthur Moschinozki and I am glad to be partnering with the city in a lot of things we do, especially the Movies at the Parks. We're going to be shooting for 10 a year. Hopefully, we can achieve that goal and hopefully you guys all come out and bring your kids for the family-friendly movies and we're going to be playing around with different age-range movies so that way it's not just all for little kids but adults can enjoy them too.
Hi, Mr. President, thank you. I'm the Director of Papa.
I'm Jonathan Meskis. Stand at the back for the last thing. I've been part of the group here.
Hi, my name's Chris Angus. I own Spirit Vision Films. Been working with Papa for over two years now, going into my third year. We produced some documentaries which the mayor mentioned earlier. And this year, which I was totally shocked by, one of our features, one of the best documentary and best informative feature in a film festival that encompasses many states. And for little Port Angeles and our little TV station, we were pretty shocked and thrilled. We just want to thank you for all that you guys do for us, too.
Hi, I'm Dr. Sharon Buck. I'm the Vice President of Instruction up at Peninsula College and happy to be a board member with Papa. And Chris is being a little shy. He does aerial videography or aerial cinematography. And if you haven't taken a look at some of those, you really need to take a peek because it's something very, very special. And it's a special resource here in our community that we can all point to.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Belay and I'm in the building industry. And I'm very honored to work with a bunch of great people because they really make you want to give back to the community. And we do want to thank you, Sissy, and Port Angeles, what you have done for us and how you do it for us. We are appreciated so much. And thank you so much.
Thank you all. And I do have to give one more point for Chris because thanks to him, we put together this little... Well, we put together this little film that helped us with our wateration. So that was really helpful because it really illustrated our issue clearly, clearly well. So they have come to our gate and we're hoping that we are going to have a long, long relationship together. So thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Alright. Let's go into the public comment period of our meeting. So it looks like we've got one person who's signed up. Steve Hopkins?
Hi, I'm... I'll see you later. I'm Steve Hopkins. I'm the Operations and Planning Manager for Callum Transit and also a city resident. I just wanted to provide some feedback regarding our participation in the Day of Play. We have over 200 youth that make use of the transportation system on the Day of Play. We were pleased to be a partner with the city with that and they've supported our help with promoting that service as well. Coming up next week with the Callum County Fair. Callum Transit will be providing system-wide free service on Thursday, the 16th, through Saturday, the 18th, for everyone, for all of our routes with the exception of the Straight Shot over to Bay Harbor Island. But it's a great opportunity to try out our service and head out to the fair. And touching on the Straight Shot, in this past July of 2018, we experienced a 30% increase in ridership over July of 2017. So we're really pleased with the reception of the Straight Shot and look forward to continuing that service in the future.
Thank you so much for that. That's amazing that you're there to be doing the free ride for the Callum Fair.
Yeah, that's amazing.
That is really great.
That's all you're supposed to do at the Straight Shot.
So thank you, thank you. And I'm hoping that that will get everybody riding. Puses are fun. So thank you. Alright, anybody else who would like to come and speak to us on any matter whatsoever? Sorry. Sorry. I guess you're whiskeying. Alright, anybody else? No? Alright, so with this, we will move on. Are there any late items?
Madam Mayor, Council, we do not have any late items this evening but we do have an item to pull from the agenda. And we received a very late email just this evening. we're pulling that item, and we'll get Councilmen more information on what their concerns were, and we'll bring it back to a future meeting addressing those issues.
All right, is that the four higher vehicle?
It is either G1 for higher vehicles.
Thank you. All right, so we've got the consent agenda. Let me begin by revealing it. The consent agenda, City Council minutes of July 3, 2018, expenditure report for July... Actually, before we did, is it the report? Okay. Expenditure report from July 14th to July 27th, 2018, in the amount of $1,877,296.06. The inter-local agreement to set administrative fees for PennCom. Number four, planning commission appointment. Number five, inter-local agreement with Colton County Emergency System notifications. Number six, metal recycling facility fencing contract formal acceptance. Number seven, 2018 Electrical Utility Resource Plan. And number eight was the facade and sign contract, number 18-08 for Barhop Brewing LLC. Are there any questions or discussion items? Okay, I do have some. So let me get to them. I know that I asked Chief Smith if he could get us some numbers. As to, yeah, some numbers on the, it was the inter-local agreement for the PennCom. I don't know if you were able to get a chance to look up some of those expenditures, because in the report, it just showed that we're going to go from 8%, and now we're going to go to 2%. I just wanted to get some sense of what the total dollars are collected.
So Madam Mayor, I can, I think I can help you with your questions. The two accounts that we get money, that's a big part of our PennCom revenue stream, the phone tax and the sales tax. Looking at 2018 right now, that's 1.96 billion, you know, just unquote 2 million. And 8% that would take out about $717,000 in indirets. The proposed indirect that we negotiated would change that to 39,000. That's just the difference between 8% and 2%. We're told that county policy requires an indirect withholding rate of 8% absent of statute or an agreement. And Sheriff Benedict has taken the lead on this. I will be there with him when he presents this, but he's assured me that this is, you know, this is part of our inter-local PennCom negotiations. And it's important for us, as we're developing the 2019 budget, that we have accurate numbers to work with. So it affects the users in a big way, you know, 8% versus 2%.
Thank you, thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. I know that when I read this, I just had, I read it a couple of times, and I understood that we're going to get that amazing reduction. It's just interesting to note it and to know the previous years and, you know, how we acted on sales, so I appreciate that. And then my other question had to do with, well, actually, I know that we've done this before on the Electric Utility Resourcement Plan, and I know it's just using PPA money, but is this the plan where we're slowly going to be hopefully adding potentially some solar or some wind, or, you know, how do we get to, you know, 20 years from now, having a diverse electrical plant?
No, what this plan really does is, what this plan really does is to set out the where the city intends to purchase this power for the short term. And probably going to change through the plan, provided in the agenda, the city makes this really just laying out how much power we intend to purchase from valuable power.
Okay.
It's a straightforward deal, as you're part of the Department of Commerce.
Yeah, I just don't know, because every year we'd like to see something more than just, you know, PPA. I don't know, we can only cover that there, Sharon.
Just on that, no, we're not contracted PPA till 2028, I think. And my understanding is our priorities are cost and reliability. So if we are thinking about other things like where our fuel comes from, or, you know, developing local supply for electricity, that we should probably start to think about that stuff probably maybe before 2023, in order that we be in a position where we know what our policies are going to negotiate with law and bill. That's just what I understand.
And just to give my sense, I appreciate the mayor's concern. I also think that there's probably a lot blowing through, again, conservation and weatherproofing and things like that in our community that we can still be progress on before we, or having to be involved, but.
Right, and I think it's got to be both, so, yeah. Thank you. All right. All right, so I read the consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda, Ezra.
Second. Any further discussion?
I was just very excited to see number eight, the facade contract. I appreciate the city's flexibility in working with these tenants and business owners, and I'm very excited to see that improve the facade of that awesome local business, right across the street from our PMA facility.
I agree, we've been waiting without improvement. It's a very prime piece of property, so that's exciting, yeah.
All right, any further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? It passes, man. All right, so, and so, organs is the requirement. So we're going to go to G2, the 2018 budget amendment number two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our normal second amendment to the budget, and this year, as in past years, it's focusing mostly on the capital facility plan changes that we've put in place. There's very few items that are outside of CFP, and those only are included if the council has already approved those contracts or those payments. So all of these items you've seen before, but if you have any questions, Nathan, myself, or Serena Karazosa, Department of Agent Officer, will be able to help you.
Okay, Council, do we have any questions, any comments? All right, well, I've got one on page G17, because I know this is something that I've spoke with the project chief in the past, and I know that we, and I just bring it up as a item of concern. If you notice that our numbers keep going down, we keep spending more than we are putting away, and that can be true for the long term, so I'll just bring that to your attention, because I think this is something we really need to address. Wait, I'm sorry, this is, it's under the Fireman's Pension Fund, so fiduciary funds, 602.
Well, and we did address that through a policy change earlier this year, in that the general fund will be responsible, so we're not relying solely on the Fireman's Pension Fund to fund all of those things going forward. But it will be an expense that we'll need to budget in future years in the general fund after that fund is depleted.
Right, and because this is an issue of healthcare, you know, how expensive healthcare can be, the what's left in that fund could go very quickly, so, yeah.
Also, just a comment, this fund only applies to about eight different people, four, four of them. So it's not the entire fire department, it's just just for four people, yes. So that's why I don't feel that this is a concern.
Well, and I would disagree with you, because when health care's costs go up and one person has a one medical thing, what about this fund, and then the rest?
Especially if they have life care.
Right, ends up in our general fund. So like I said, to me, it's just something that we're going to have to... All right, so, so we've got, this is the first reading. Is there any other questions in your comments? Okay, so this one continued on to August 21st. I guess if there's no other things, we'll move on. So we're going on to other considerations, City Manager Contract, and Councilman Mark Kidd is going to begin this one.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I am very pleased to announce that since the last council meeting, there have been negotiations between council members, you and myself, and the acting City Manager, Nathan West. And this evening, we presented the new contract to the entire council and Mr. West, and we have come to an agreement that we have, we have a contract for our new City Manager, which he has accepted. And it has, so all we need to do this evening is officially approve the contract with some minor grammar-graunter modifications, but we essentially have come to an agreement. And we're very pleased to present a new City Manager. As of September 5th, that'll be the last day for Dan McKean and the first day for Nathan West. And I believe that this, that the council has made a very wise move in choosing Mr. West. We're very pleased with his experience, his credentials, and frankly, his love of Port Angeles and his knowledge of Port Angeles. We just feel that we have many wonderful years ahead with the City Manager. And so we welcome Mr. West, and after we officially vote as the council on this, but it's been wonderful to go through these negotiations and come to an agreement. So I'm proud to let the citizens know that we're at this point. And therefore, I make a motion that we accept the city, the employment agreement between the City of Port Angeles and Nathan West for City Manager, position of City Manager.
And you'll approve the mayor's assignment?
Yes, and with the mayor's signature, please.
All right, any, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, thank you. [applause]
Council, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I am very appreciative that council has faith and confidence in my abilities to move this contract forward. And most specifically, I'm very excited to continue to serve this community, and it's my goal to both exceed council's expectations as well as community expectations on where this city goes from here. So I am so appreciative, and thank you again, Council, for your support.
Thank you. All right, that is wonderful. All right, on to the next one, contracts and purchasing, fire department turnout, year purchase.
Thanks, Mark Council. I'll take this one. We are coming forward with a request for approval to move forward with purchase of replacement turnout gear for the fire department. Turnout gear is the protective clothing that we wear that enables us to work safely in hazardous environments. So this is very specialized gear. It's equipment that is designed to keep us cool when it's hot, to keep us warm when it's cold, to protect us from injury, from abrasions, from punctures, from broken glass, things like that. It also provides barriers for moisture from inside and outside, and also provides protection for biohazards as well. It's very specialized gear, it's very expensive gear, and the Washington Administrative Code requires that it's replaced every 10 years. So the law, state law, requires it's replaced every 10 years, whether it's ever worn or not, doesn't matter, it still needs to be replaced. We use ours every single day. It's very heavily used, it's, replacement is needed, but we are at the point now where the majority of our gear is 10 years old. 10 years ago, we were able to replace all of this gear to a federal grant. We applied for that grant last year, and we were turned down. We applied for that grant again this year, and we were awarded $25,000 towards the purchase price. The remaining funding for this is kind of called together from a couple of different places, which I'll explain to you. So the first is the $25,000 came from a federal grant. We're going to accept that grant, obviously. And then several years ago, about four years ago, we opened up a revolving account to the CFP. Because we know this gear needs to be replaced every 10 years, we started putting money aside about four years ago. The most that we could afford to the budget at that time is about $17,000 per year, so under that, we've managed to accumulate at this point about $46,000 towards the purchase. And then we also were able to make to achieve $26,000 in savings from another CFP project. About three years ago, we started a CFP project to replace all of the city-owned fire alarm systems in the city. So for instance, the senior center, the fire station, the community library, they all have fire alarm systems that report into PennCom. And there's a piece of equipment in PennCom that's about 40, 50 years old that had to be replaced. And so when that happened, we could no longer monitor all of those firearms in PennCom. So we have a CFP project to replace all of those systems so that they could then be monitored by off-site monitoring company. But we originally put aside about, I believe, $35,000 or $40,000 to accomplish that project. In the interim period of time, the technology changed to the point that there was so much savings that we were able to finish that project and have $26,000 left over. That was a good thing. So it shows happening very often, but it happened in this case. So we were able to use that $26,000 also towards this purchase. Then the remaining funding is coming from salary savings. So as you know, several years ago, the council voted to approve our department hire for additional personnel. It has taken us years to do that. The market for firefighter paramedics is extremely tight right now. It's a seller's market, it is a very difficult hiring environment, and it's taking us quite some time. Partially, that's our fault, because we will only hire the best and the brightest, I'm not going to change that policy, but it has taken us some time. So this year, as of yesterday, we had two openings, and we filled one of them yesterday. We anticipate filling the second one in October of this year. So for the combined for this year, we had those positions budgeted. We have 17 months of budget savings because those positions weren't built, and we're using the remaining of that money, which is a total of about $126,000. We're using $56,000 of those savings to complete this purchase. Now, one of the questions was why some of that's coming from the general fund. The reason why is because even though those two positions over one filter are paramedic positions, the way that the funding for those positions goes, it's 65% comes from the medic one utility, 35% comes from the general fund. So basically, the money really isn't coming from the general fund, it's just a reduced transfer from the general fund. In fact, all of that money is coming from salary savings from that one of the positions. So the total of all that comes up to $154,000, and that is the total purchase price for this.
Thank you for that summary. Do we have any questions?
So what do you do if you won here? Because that'd be a great holiday costume.
We are going to... For $3,000, you can come and talk to me, and we will be donating the equipment to an organization that transfers the equipment to Central American countries that don't have the same standards that we do. So for them, it's better than a t-shirt and courage jeans, basically.
So this year, it looks like we're confident we have some funds to buy this gear. In the capital facilities plan, we have $17,500 allocated for each of the next five years, and then presumably, or five years after that, so that by the time we get to this situation 10 years from now, we'll have this money set aside, and then we'll have to borrow from other places.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct. It's just that this year, we started, just based on the way that the budget was organized, we started late. But as, what we're doing is we look at a projection for what the gear will cost 10 years now, we have about a 3% inflation rate, and we say that... years from now, we have about a 3% inflation rate and we save that much every month.
Counselmember Kidd?
I'd like to commend Chief Dubu for these savings. First of all, 10 years ago, you applied for a grant. We had a grant for it. So that shows a lot of, just really being on the ball to do that. You applied for a grant again and we got $25,000 from a grant. So I don't know how long the application took, but it was certainly worthwhile. That's excellent. And the way you put together the savings, that this basically is protecting the taxpayers without additional costs. And I really appreciate the thoughtful way you've handled this expense. And we just don't get many reports as rosy as this. I just think the way it was handled was just beautiful. So my hats off to you, good job. And it's just, it's a big win all the way around.
Well, this actually is all Tess. She's the magician.
Tess, that's my word. Tess is our magician. But everybody, yeah, I really appreciate it. It's just, just a beautiful job.
Good job. Anybody else? Any comments? All right, so I need a motion, counsel.
I motion authorize the city manager to sign a contract to see less firefighting equipment for the purchase of 50 sets of firefighting turnout gear.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is passes unanimously. Wonderful. All right, let's do council reports. Councilmember Moran, we'll start with you here.
Oh.
Yeah, council reports.
Okay, it's been a very interesting couple of weeks for me. First of all, we welcomed our new granddaughter, Abigail. And so we have, that's our second. So Abigail is a communist addition to the Moran household and we're thrilled to have her, she's born on July 22nd. On July 26th, 27th, I attended the AWC budget and financial met and conference down in Cat Bulla. Mayor Hertz was not, and I attended the conference. It was truly well done. Confirmed a lot of the things that I had suspicions about. So anyways, it was a good conference, a lot of resources, and I'd like to maybe in the future, share some of the thoughts and the results of that conference. Last Sunday, two days ago, I had the unique experience of driving our new senior center bus all the way to Snohomni Falls. We took the kids to the Northwest Train Museum in Snohomni. And if you haven't been there, it's a wonderful day. It's a working railroad, third of the century, last century railroad. And then we went to see the falls at Snohomni and go back. It was a wonderful day, long day, but they hung their with me, so it was a great trip. And Stephen Laurie, I'd like to mention that this is National Farmers Market Week and August 5th through the 11th, it's been recognized nationally as National Farmers Week. And Stephen Laurie runs the farmers market for us here in Portland, is doing a wonderful job. And on his birthday, Lindsay and I were at the farmers market on Saturday. So happy birthday, Lindsay. Hope you had a great party and we had a great time and thank you for your hospitality at the farmers market, guys. It was great. So and again, congratulations on National Farmers Market Week, August 5th through the 11th.
So this last Wednesday, I attended this other council member's AWC training on, I can't remember the exact title, but it was on a plan. It was really, I'm glad we did it because it was a good kind of pre-research for our zoning one-on-one that we have here tonight. The thing I wanted to share is an article that I read on Strong Towns. And this is a nonprofit that you've heard both Lindsay and I reference in different places in council reports and other places. And it was an article that they shared called "Most Public Engagement Is Worse Than Worthless." And it's kind of a catchy title. They're not really saying that we shouldn't engage the public. They're just saying that we should be a lot more careful on how we engage the public, that we don't just ask questions that we already have answers to, we should be asking questions that are relevant to the public. And I think we have some good examples of that here in the city of Port Angeles. The 10th Street projects is one that came to my mind when I was reading the article, ways in which we were doing a good job. But I think there's a lot of room to learn and engage with our community in more substantive ways. So we're not just, you know, the one example that he had in the article was, they were talking about environmental sustainability and he said, you know, they asked the public what they think and they came back with things like, oh, solar panels. And he said, do we really think that our experts in sustainability don't know about solar panels? Obviously, they do. We have these experts for reasons and really, we need to be asking different questions. So it's really a great article that we want to look it up. It's on strongtowns.org. The title is "Most Public Engagement Is Worse Than Worthless."
I'll put an reply for Strong Towns as well and their podcast is fantastic and very informative for everyone who's thinking about how our city can work better for all of us. Speaking of all of us, I just came from the homelessness task force meeting earlier this afternoon. Conversation focused around the impending winter season when it's wetter and cooler. And we currently don't have a little area night by night shelter in place or here in Port Angeles before Cal, kind of generally. And there's not enough funding for everything that needs to happen. So, you know, it's not a good situation there for everyone working on this issue. I'm really thankful that our police department and the month through a minute back there are doing some really innovative work. Sorry, I missed your presentation this morning. And hopefully, we can hear more about it, maybe a public comment right after this or at a presentation at a forthcoming city council meeting. You know, the state's been getting more innovative with how it tries to allocate funding toward housing, affordable housing and homelessness. In 2015, the state legislature required King County to use, starting in 2021, to use 37% of its lodging tax for affordable workforce housing within like half a mile of transit centers or something like that. So apparently, in King County, lodging tax can be used for affordable workforce housing. That doesn't apply outside King County, but the legislature defines things how it wants. The legislature also recently changed the rules for cities on surplus properties for affordable housing and being able to give surplus properties in different ways. So there's a webinar by Association of Washington Cities on August 15th. I'm to listen to that and if anyone else is interested, let's watch it together. It's also open to the public, not just to elected officials and city staff. So if anyone's interested in advocating on this, you know, for the city, I don't know that our surplus property list is really large enough to make use of this, but it's good to follow what's going on. I'll share that with you, Mike. Yeah, so I mean, we've, I think, you know, we've got some positive stuff coming forward with the needs assessment, but I hope to hear from that soon about where we are with the city. We've kind of said, we're going to assess our needs before we move forward with policy, but, you know, we're all comfortably housed up here and not really feeling, you know, what this issue means. So that's my downriver report.
All right, councilman.
Traffic. So there's, there are other ways to get across town. And for those that don't know, 3:30 is when Westport gets out. That's down, that's track route. And I've already seen a couple extremely close calls where people come around the corner. Traffic is backed up every day at that time towards the arena. And because of the bridges are only one way. So if there's a way for anybody to avoid those areas ahead of time, I would suggest you do so. And the other one is, we have some funky signal lights in this town. I don't advocate a red light by any means, but if you come across a light that is, in your opinion, messed up and it's not changing, nobody's around, it's the middle of the night or it's the middle of the day and everybody's looking at each other, to call it into the city. Because you may think, well, the next guy will call it in. Well, that next guy may think it's the next guy that's going to call it in. And the city's not going to know that these lights are not working properly if nobody's notified of it.
Do you have specific ones?
Well, there was one at Fifth Race the other day. But there's also one at Lincoln Boulevard that has a left turn signal in the middle of the night and doesn't change when you get to the plate. A few of those belong to the state of Washington.
All right, councilmember Kidd.
It's summertime and I get a good, being a U-Haul franchisee, I get a good idea of who's coming and going in Port Angeles. We have people moving in the summertime, we have moving out, we have people moving in. And I get a lot of reports on Port Angeles. I get a personal thrill when the family is bringing in a U-Haul truck and they've driven here from Texas or California or someplace and they finally pull in the truck and they get out. And I'm the first one to greet them and ask, are you moving to Port Angeles? And when they say yes, that's when I turn on and give out the handshake and the official welcome on behalf of the city of Port Angeles. And I give a little speech and you know what? They love it. It's a small town and nobody ever forgets it. And when people are leaving, I ask them how they like it. And when they're moving here, I ask them why. And you know, we have a wonderful reputation. People leaving want to come back. People moving here, just, they're so anxious to be in such a beautiful place and part of such a wonderful community. So I hear the complaints, I hear the compliments, but I'm getting 95% compliments on our town, on the progress we're making, on the waterfront, on the arts, on so many things. So we're like every town in America. We have our struggles and we're doing our best, but we're doing something right, counsel, because people love Port Angeles. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you. And I promised the library folks that I would wear this. I attended the library's Art Plus the Palooza. It was a great event. They were handing these things out. They had all sorts of really interesting things and the music was amazing. So when they do this again, I highly recommend coming in. They had this band that had the trumpets and it was just way fun. Anyway, so I can't see anything else. There's so many.
Blanken now?
Yeah. With that, the next thing I want to, sorry, I can't leave with those things. I did attend the same budget AWC meeting and I have got all the PowerPoints and the notes. We're going to put a space in the server so that all council can get to that. But it is something that, it was very clear that we've got to continue to move forward and making sure that we have budget goals decided early and then move forward with those things. So we're going to keep working to continue to make this place better. So that was really wonderful. The Hadori presentation, you all saw. Again, they spent an hour doing some incredible things and I was just grateful that they were here and they were able to show a little bit of their talents to you. Talking about good things and bad things, yes, the homelessness. I know we've got a couple of emails about folks that are on the beach and, you know, where is our pride? But, you know, it is, it is a struggle that we have and we're hoping to slowly work our best on that and see what we can do about housing folks, because that should be right. And talking about moving people here, this morning, I got a call from this woman in Michigan who's, she's like, I saw that you came from Michigan and we're moving now here and we'd like to know why and how. And so it was a very interesting conversation of a young couple, why they want to move here. And so this town is being found. A lot of folks are really interested. They come in with a lot of skills and so we've got to ensure that we're planning properly for folks coming in and they can find housing and raise their families here. So it was pretty exciting. Very good leak here. But that ends my report, so I will move that on to information, the city manager report.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, we do have a number of reports for you on the city manager information. Most notably, I'd like to mention the mid-year financial report. We do have a small correction that I need to make you aware of. On L5, you'll see that we mislabeled one of the columns. I believe it's been labeled as 2018 when I should have labeled it as 2017. But other than that, I think you'll enjoy reviewing that report and looking at the mid-year status of our finances. Additionally, I want to highlight the draft 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington, which as you know, correlates to our National Close Discharge Illumination System permit. And I think that's also something that the council executive will have interest in. We have made some pretty substantial progress on the housing needs assessment and perhaps Acting Director Brecky can update you at the next council meeting with more information on that. I did want to mention to counsel too, that at this point in time, we are considering the priority setting process complete for this year. We are very appreciative of both staff and counsel for taking the time and investing the great input relative to that priority setting process. And at this point, staff does have what we need to move that forward if in fact, we need to apply it. But we also have clear direction from counsel relative to scoring, relative to threshold. But more importantly, in looking to efficiencies first, doing our best to review budget for existing efficiencies that might be found, as well as looking at additional new revenues before we step into really looking at and having to utilize the priority setting that was completed by council. So again, we're appreciative for counsel's time on that, but at this time, we're considering it complete.
Thank you.
I would like to just make a comment on the mid-year financial report. First of all, thank you Tess for taking the time and patience for answering all my little mundane questions. Again, I appreciate that. The report is very well done and I like the way it's organized. And also, the numbers came out a little bit better than I thought they would for this half of the year. So I was pleased with that. But again, I meant to you and your staff. And again, thank you for taking the time to answer all my questions. Thanks.
Yeah, and I would like to add that this financial report, I thought it was just so much easier to read. There was just something about that, I guess maybe it's the graphic with the table together just made it so much clearer and you could see trends very quickly. I would actually also point out to 2015, that top graph, I think the date on that might come up as well, but yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. That was, I truly appreciate seeing that. And then I also wanted to touch on the public works grants because I thought that was really interesting how we have the city parking lot LID coming up for public works, you know, for the stormy, we've got the 16th Street LID retrofit and the decan facility. I think those three, I know that they were awarded way back in February 2016 and I found that interesting that we're, you know, awaiting the agreement with DLE to get some of this included, but at least that they're on the pipeline. And so I appreciate that. That was, that's on page 24. So with that, we are ready for the second public commentary. Does anybody in the audience want to come and talk to counsel, talk anything? Please, hold your mic. State your name and whether you live in the city.
Hi, Steve Argus, and I do live in the city of Port Angeles here. And I'm with the Port Angeles Farmers Market. And I'd like to thank you all for the little plug on the farmers market. We're really proud of it. And I also wanted to let everyone know that I did receive an email this morning from the Small Business Association congratulating all the farmers markets around the country. And they have a little plug in there that I thought you might be a little interested in. And that's how much money that is made from the farmers market goes back to the local community. And the statistics was 62% of all money made at the farmers market goes back to the local community. And since we make about $10,000 on Saturday, and that's pretty easy, about $6,200 every Saturday that goes back to. $6,200 every Saturday, that goes back to our storefronts, the downtown area, and the community.
That's wonderful, thank you for that information, that's great, and the more we can recirculate those dollars, the better they are, so, thank you.
Hello, my name's Stephen Lexton, I don't live in the city. I had some thoughts on the affordable housing and the situation we're facing here, and really everywhere on the west coast. I'm kind of a amateur developer, I guess, in that I own a number of rental properties that I've built over the last few years that I would consider affordable housing. And I saw that there was this Affordable Housing Task Force being put together, and I didn't see any input on the task force for people that actually owned and managed any affordable housing, so I was wondering if there's going to be an opportunity for that group of people to have input.
Well, we're hoping to get a lot of input from a lot of folks, so, yeah, we're going to start the group, do you say your name, Stephen Lexton?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I will, I will try to reach out to you.
Okay, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of reasons why people don't want to do affordable housing, I've been figuring all of them out, slowly.
Okay, no, that's really important to know, so thank you. All right, anybody else who would like to speak to Counsel?
All right. Just a reminder, it's election night, we have to go, we're going to have the results right after 8 o'clock.
It's true, make sure you get your ballot, you still got a little bit of time to get it in, Larry. Was there a phone line in, was a break phone coming in? No, I'm last minute, what can I say? And last things, okay, so we'll see no one wanting to speak to us, we are adjourned. Thank you all.